Good evening. I'm calling the special public hearing of the town to order. We have two ordinances or two items up for discussion this evening. We will give you information on each of them and we will take your comments and questions separately on each one. We are not enforcing the sign up three minute regulation tonight, but we would ask that you be respectful with all of the people that might want time to speak in the left of time you choose. That being said, I will read the notice and the certification. The town council of the town of Watertown will hold public hearings at Watertown Town Hall Town Council Chambers in Watertown, Connecticut on Tuesday, August 12th, 2025 at 7:00 PM to consider the following proposed ordinances. An ordinance appropriating $34 million for a settlement of litigation against the town in the case of the city of Waterbury versus town of Watertown and for related costs and authorizing the issue of bonds or notes and temporary notes in the same amount to finance the appropriation. An ordinance appropriation $10,000 for, I'm sorry, $10 million for various road improvements and related work and authorizing your bonds or notes and temporary notes in the same amount to finance the appropriation. A copy of each of the reposed ordinances is on file with the town clerk of the town of Watertown. Eligible voters and affected persons will be heard at the public hearing concerning the proposed ordinances dated at Watertown, Connecticut, the sixth day of August, 2025. Mary Ann Rosa, Chair of Watertown Town Council. I hereby certify that on August 6th, 2025, I caused a copy of the foregoing notice of public hearing to be published in the Republican American, which newspaper has a general substantial circulation in the town of Watertown, that I caused a copy of the foregoing notice of public hearings to be posted on the public signposts in the town of Watertown on August 6th, 2025, and that all such acts took place at least five days before the holding of said public hearings on August 12th, 2025, and that such notice has been filed with the town clerk in the records of the town dated August 6th, 2025. Maria Guerrero, Finance Director, Town of Watertown. The town clerk's certification has certified hereby certified that the attached warning and notice are duly recorded in the records of the town of Watertown, Connecticut, and the following person was the duly elected town council chairperson of the town of Watertown on the date the attached warning and notice was signed. Mary Ann Rosa, signed and sealed at Watertown, Connecticut, the sixth day of August, 2025. Lisa Dalton, Town Clerk. So the first issue before us is the settlement of the litigation with Waterbury for $34 million. And I'll ask the town manager if he would make comments to this.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'd just like to talk about the water and sewer litigation and look at the strategic options and the overview of the bonding package that's being presented before you. This overview focuses on the bonding package and its impact on both ratepayers and taxpayers. While not mentioned throughout this document, there is still pending litigation currently under consideration by the Supreme Court as a reminder. Who is responsible for paying repaying the bonded debt? $34 million litigation bond repaid by essentially the Water and Sewer Authority of ratepayers. The Watertown Fire District will be responsible for a portion of this and the litigation bond could be reduced eliminated under some of the strategic options that we'll discuss later on in this briefing. The Fire District is estimated to be responsible for approximately one-fifth of the debt. We anticipate meeting with the Fire District's attorney to discuss this payment arrangement later next week. Why is it important for Watertown to bond? Currently, we're under an 18% statutory interest rate on the amount that is owed the city of Waterbury plus an 8% post judgment interest, which is basically simple interest which is accumulated on top of the 18% interest. That cost is about $355,000 per month as we work through this issue. By bonding, we'll secure a lower interest rate thereby reducing the total cost to the town eventually. The debt management strategy, by utilizing this debt management strategy, we support our AA bond rating. This substantial debt has been reported in our audit. It is important for Watertown to take proactive approach in settling the debt and determining how to proceed. Our actions will be evaluated during our next bond rating review. The estimated rate increases, so we're, we have asked for up to $34 million. We're considering it over a 20-year bond at approximately 4.25% interest rate. That interest rate is flexible, just like any other thing that you would go out for a home finance. We would have to wait till we actually go out to bond. The annual cost is estimated to be at about $2.56 million that would be spread over the ratepayers. There's two ways to recoup this money from the ratepayers and one would be an equal share, which is just dividing that amount equally amongst all ratepayers, whether that's a residential, a business, or an industrial type factory. Or we could look at it from a proportional usage and I think that that would be in the best interest of the town to look at proportional usage so that as we spread this and try and do it equitably, it would be those who could afford would be able to pay a little bit more and those who cannot would be not as impacted. So our estimated proportional impact, I do have a handout that's on the desk in the center. Please feel free to take a piece. It kind of gives you some frequently asked questions and answers to those frequently asked questions and it does have this chart. Looking at a low residential usage of about 5,000 gallons per year, the estimated increase per month to that ratepayer would be about $23.67 per month. A typical residence which uses between 10,000 and 13,000 gallons per year, they would see an estimated $47.33 increase due to this bonding issue. And then looking at a large business manufacturer who's using 200,000 gallons per year, their increase would be about $950 per month. And again, you know, just so we're clear, these, these figures are provided for general reference and we will anticipate that they will decrease as the final payment amount is determined and contributions from the Watertown Fire District are received. Determining each ratepayer's portion, we would look at a historical usage and we would go back 12 to 24 months and base that number on that usage proportional to each customer's share of system consumption and it would be it would be determined what your share would cost. Will this referendum raise taxes to the general fund? There is no direct property tax increase anticipated to the general fund. If costs exceed budgets, they may flow into the municipal budget potentially affecting taxes. At this point, we do not anticipate that. Water and sewer rates will increase as part of a recovery strategy for this. If you have a well in septic, there's a question out there quite often and it affects a lot of people. You're not going to be affected by the Waterbury related bonding or rate increases, although again, if it's, you potentially could have impact if the municipal budget is overrun. The annual billable amount for the town-owned buildings as rate users over the past year was about $31,500. This does not include the Fire Department, which company won on Main Street, the Police Department or Town Hall, all of which use Fire District services. This information is not meant to discount the impact of an increase, but rather to put it into perspective to the general fund that the increase to a ratepayer can be estimated at about $3 per year and that's if there's an overrun. If you live in the Fire District, it's a little more confusing, but your, your rate adjustments are going to be governed by the Fire District. We have open communication with the Fire District and we would like to have a consistent approach with them in addressing this issue. If the referendum fails, judgment remains due. We still owe the money and we're accumulating interest at $355,000 per month. We had a meeting with finance and our tax collector and we used, we leveraged her experience to understand how to best pay these bills. So we went after paying one specific bill to keep the interest accrual down, but it still leaves us with $355,000 accrual monthly. As we make payments to Waterbury, we'll still try to strategically pay that to reduce the interest as best as possible, but without having the total amount, we're still going to have to, we'll never really get out from underneath the interest until we pay this debt down. Some of the strategic options, this is secondary. We have to really consider a full discussion on this bonding issue and then from that answer, we move on to the additional strategic options and that would be retain full ownership, lease operations, public-private partnerships could be a consideration. We could sell the system or we could do a little bit of each as we try to talk through this. These items are under discussion and will be evaluated through a formal RFQ process. We have developed an RFP, which is a request for proposal that would bring a company in that would actually help us understand what the value of the system is. Once we put that RFP out and it should be out within the next week or so, we will attract a business that could come in and actually help us understand that value. The water systems in Connecticut is a very tight group and individual companies are afraid to get involved because it could preclude them to doing work with either the town of Watertown, a potential buyer of the system who went that way, or the city of Waterbury. So we really have to go outside our area to understand and find somebody that's going to help us work through this issue. Something that's very important to me and my direct staff is this, these discussion points on our staff at WSA. As we talk about and evaluate other issues and how to move this forward, we're talking about potentially people who can lose their livelihood. So it's, it's, I just want to point that out is as we're making these discussions in public that we're considering that there are staff members that could be affected by a decision to sell a system or lease a system or give it to an additional company to help us figure this out. We've been, we've had open communication with staff and Jerry Lukowski and Dave McMahon have continuous conversations with the staff so that they understand we have to make a decision that's for the best for the town, but they will be kept informed as we move forward. System valuation, again, this goes back to the RFP RFQ process. We need a professional valuation to consider the physical assets, the infrastructure conditions, regulatory compliance, and then projected revenues and expenses. The Water and Sewer Authority is going through a review process of rates and they will be considering those rate increases and weighing those against the potential expenses as we move through this budgetary year. The WSA has set a public hearing. It's at the end of August. I apologize. I do not remember the date, but it will be, I'm sorry, August 27th, it will be the date for the public hearing for rate setting. Thank you. Ensuring local control, when you talk about a water system and as we've had conversations in our group that the council has appointed and with water and sewer professionals, a town never wants to give up control of the water system. But I just want to say that local control is important to most municipalities and rightly so, I understand that. However, Watertown does not have its own water source. Our only direct control would be over customer service and oversight of system maintenance and improvements. Without a contract with Waterbury, we currently know, have no control over our rates whatsoever. Watertown, if we acquired a private company to acquire this system, and I'm not advocating for this, I'm just pointing out the fact that Watertown would be integrated with other customers and they would have oversight by PURA for rates. So that is something that we have to talk about going down the road, but it should be on everybody's, you know, mind that, you know, staying with Waterbury may be our answer, but we don't have any direct oversight, not having a contract with them. And just wrapping this up, our first priority is to implement rate stabilization and this is what we're discussing tonight is actually a bonding process to get this, to get out from underneath the accrual of interest. The second step would be looking at evaluation of the strategic options for the path forward and then evaluate supplemental revenue opportunities. We had an ex-employee reach out to the town, Frank Chuditis. He used to be a water and sewer, I believe superintendent, and he actually made a suggestion of looking at maybe drilling our own wells and producing a water source for Watertown. At first, I kind of said, geez, that's a lot of water produced. We use up to a million gallons a day. I did some research online quickly and there was a town in Texas that recently drilled wells and they produce about a million gallons a day. That doesn't necessarily mean that Watertown can do that, but it is something that we should look at and maybe we can't produce a million days, a million gallons a day, but maybe we can and that could offset the rates moving forward. But again, that's part of the secondary step. I think that's pretty much concludes what I have on this.
Okay, we will begin taking comments from the public.
Franklin Pelosi, 235 Main Street, Watertown, Connecticut. I support all of the council decisions throughout this matter. I think the council made the proper decision based on all the background information available to it and I support the ordinance that's up for discussion at this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual? Yes, sir.
Thomas Donson, 320 Park Road, Watertown. The only thing I don't see in this is on this $34 million bond, are we going to continue to withhold money monthly on paying Waterbury? Are we going to pay the rates that they want because so we don't accrue more bills? That's what's going to happen.
Yes, Mr. Donson, we, the Water and Sewer Authority back in, I believe, June voted to start paying the current rates. So we are currently doing that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Catherine Camma, 31 Cottage Place. You know, I hate to beat a dead horse, but I still don't understand why this work wasn't done two years ago because as we just heard, we're accruing even after a payment, $355,000 a month. So I can't understand, when you went to appeal, were you not advised that we might lose? That's what I don't understand. Did you not get the advice that, you know, it's a 50/50? So I just cannot understand why all this work wasn't done in preparation for a loss because we all sitting here every day that goes by, it's thousands and thousands of dollars just in interest. It's really appalling to me. Something that was just said about when the choices of how this could get paid, I don't know if this was misspoken, but it's, Mr. Ramos said the proportionate share so that those who can't afford it would, wouldn't have to pay as much. So that's confusing to me because I don't understand. Are we doing it by your share is based on what you use or based on what your income is? Because that, that didn't seem to add up.
Based on what you use. I believe by that reference, he made the difference between a commercial building being more able to afford it than a residence.
In other words, because I as a single person could probably afford more than a family of four, however, I don't feel that I want to pay what I use.
It's not that way. It's usage.
Yeah, it was the way it was said. I wasn't sure about that. And, and I'm curious about the Waterbury, talking about a contract. I would think that once this gets paid, we could get back to talking about a contract with them. I don't know if we could do anything about that now because obviously we have a judgment waiting to be paid. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not for selling it to anybody. I don't see anything. We're talking about this as if there's any other problem and the problem really comes down to that we were shortchanging them. We owe them the money. I don't think the service is, I've been in my house for 27 years. I've never had any issues. So I would hope that once this is, the judgment is paid, that perhaps discussing a contract before going crazy and doing all this other work, or maybe it could start now and to say, hey, listen, when this is paid, what do you think we can do about contracts for the future? And speaking of that, yeah, I don't know if there's talk about the state having anything to do with this. I don't know if borrowing money from the state would be less than a bond, but I will tell you that my problem about the bond right now is I still don't know how much money I'm going to be putting towards this. So you're asking for us to vote for a bond, take out a loan basically, and I don't have any idea what I'm paying. Alls I'm hearing about is what the, the people who have well in septic might pay. It's not very much. You know, I just, I just, it's very hard to decide that, to go and vote and say, yeah, let's take out $34 million, but have absolutely no idea what it's going to cost. I have emailed you all. I did ask if we could get a breakdown of expenses. I don't know if that could happen. I also have a comment that I don't know that anybody's thought about this, but you know, businesses in town, something like a hair salon and a restaurant, their rates are going to go up. So who's going to, who's going to pay for those? It's going to be us. So in our own town, we're now going to, hey, listen, I'll go to Sasso's and not Fino's. I'll go to, you know, Thomas, you know, these things are going to become more expensive for us in our own town in addition to all of this because these costs are going to get passed on to us. And I don't know if anybody's, I've never heard anything mentioned about that either. So, so this really is very disturbing and, well, anyway, enough said. Thank you.
Excuse me. Right in front of you is a fact sheet with information.
Okay.
That answers your question.
Oh, well, I should also mention then, you know, there's some grumbling among some of the members on the town council that there's the same 10 people who come to meetings and, and we spread misinformation. I know I'm one of those. But oddly, I never heard the misinformation told what was the misinformation, so it's hard to have corrections. But I do want to apologize because back in 2023, when you decided to appeal, the STPs, as we're known, calculated the debt would grow to about 28 million and we were wrong. It grew to 34.4 million. So yes, we did spread some misinformation. Thank you.
The next speaker, please.
Good evening. Amy Quinnin, 159 Fernhill Road. The $34 million bond is reflective of a dispute that was mishandled for years. The residents of Watertown are now being asked to shoulder the cost of the decisions and indecisions that were not, that we did not make. This is why our leadership, our trust in our leadership has eroded. If the town is asking taxpayers to approve these bonds, we deserve clear, specific answers. How will the bond's repayment schedule impact the town's overall budget? And what services or projects, projects might face cuts to accommodate these payments? What independent oversight or audits will be conducted to ensure the bond funds are used as promised? And how will findings be shared with the public? These questions are not just about numbers. They are about accountability. Watertown deserves more than crisis-driven decisions and trust us assurances. If leadership cannot give residents confidence in how these debts will be managed, then it is not the residents who have failed. It is leadership that has failed to earn that trust. Approval of these bonds is not just a financial decision. It is a test of whether transparency, accountability, and fiscal responsibility truly matter in this town. Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Alex Webster, 110 Eddy Street. Good evening. I'm here tonight to say what a lot of people are thinking and lots of people online have opinions, but honestly, not enough people are coming to this room to say it out loud. This is the result of years of poor planning, lack of transparency. We're now facing a bill. We have no choice but to pay and it will impact every single one of us for years to come. But just because we have to pay it doesn't mean we have to accept how we got here. These people were elected by us. They keep getting reelected. Too many people don't show up and that's exactly what politics counts on and we don't ask enough questions. This has to change. I do respect the volunteers who give their time freely, but this issue has been known for years, one year ago, two years ago, three years ago, however far back. Yet here we are and now there's talk of even adding this other $10 million infrastructure with no clear plan. So I'm sorry to the town manager, but you're paid by us to manage this town responsibly and you're letting things get this bad is a failure of leadership. The taxpayers now have to bear this burden. You say that taxes aren't going to increase. Everything else is going to. We need transparency, real planning, honesty, no more vague promises or last minute fixes. And if there's a problem, we deserve to hear it before it becomes a disaster. The election season's coming up and this is our chance to hold people accountable. If we keep electing the same folks and staying silent, we'll get more of the same, more debt, higher rates, and more decisions made with us. And I just want to be clear. Every budget season, the politics try to pit the seniors against the schools and the seniors versus the kids and this is a distraction because the real problem is your poor decisions and failed leadership consistent for years. So I'm asking you guys, don't let the politics divide us when it's their actions that have created this mess. Come budget season, I'll be again reminding everyone that the increases are a direct result of this town's management. And yeah, we will pay this bond because it's obviously inevitable, but we need to remember who let us get here and demand moving better forward.
The next speaker, please.
Good evening. Elia Longo, 83 Bella Vista Drive. I just have a clarifying question. If we look at the monthly carrying cost, the debt to Waterbury, if this bond does not pass at $355,000, annualized, that's approximately 4.3 million. If you're paying 18% per annum, 4.3 million is 18% of 24 million. Have we already paid Waterbury $10 million?
We've paid 5 million.
I'm sorry, you've paid 5 million?
That's correct.
All right. So that estimate may be somewhat short to 355 on a monthly basis. On a monthly basis, maybe well over 4, 450 per month carrying costs.
If the 5 million was not applied, correct?
All right. But even if we add the 5 billion, if we add the $5 million to a mark, even at 18%, it doesn't tie out to the $34 million. My worry or concern, my advice, take it for whatever it's worth, is that as a town, we don't overextend ourselves because you're pressing against a debt ceiling, right, on it. So borrow what we need to borrow, right? I'm in favor of this resolution because I see it as the only viable option at this time, but just ask that you, you know, triple check all the time. But just ask that you, you know, triple check all the amounts, the numbers here. Let's just borrow what we feel we need to borrow. Maybe there's a slight margin there, 5% within the borrowing. But if it's we're borrowing up to $34 million, but the true need is closer to, say, to $27 million, perhaps that's where it should be kept.
Madam Chairwoman, may I add a comment to that? So I'm in full agreement. Under the advice of Bond Council, we went for the $34 million. We also anticipate that number to be around the 28, $29 million. But it is a moving number that we cannot put our finger on at the moment. We still do not know exactly what the fire district has in their account to share with us and cover their costs. So that's those are numbers that we're going to review. So this is not a full bond that we're going to go out in October for. It will be a banding series where we'll take short term notes that will accumulate to whatever that bond would be. It would give us a budget cycle to actually understand what the impact is to the budget, and we could properly budget for it next year. So yes, we're in the we're under the same opinion as you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next speaker, please.
Richard Razansky, 35 Ronald Street. I just want to express my my disappointment that there's been no communications with the fire district in regards to the share that they owe towards the $34 million. And there's been no official notification to the fire district as far as what the rate that WSA is going to be charging them. They read the same things that we do, but I talked to the the super late last week, the superintendent late late last week, and they still receive no firm information. So the fire district cannot pass on to their 2,200 customers what effect this bond is going to be on their customer base. So I live in the fire district. I can't use any of these numbers that are on that are being displayed here because the fire district can't tell me what it's going to cost them because the WSA has not informed them. Last night, the the town manager said he thought their share was about 6 million, but but they don't know. They don't know how much they're going to have to bond themselves, what those bonding costs will be. So the WSA is really, they may have dragged defeat. Maybe they have legitimate reason for not knowing these numbers to give to the fire district. But nonetheless, we're holding a public hearing tonight, and 2,200 residents have no information of what this bond is going to cost them. And I'm one of those 2,200 people. So the WSA and the town manager and the water sewer task force needs to inform the fire district with good data, good numbers. What is it going to cost them so the fire district can pass this information on to the fire district customers? Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, may I make a comment to that? So I'm not debating that that information was not passed on to you, but that is no result as the town's actions. We have provided data. We have we are revising that data because we found that there's actually a cost that should be included that we did not include in our first estimate. And we are now waiting for a return phone call from the water and sewers attorney. So this, as you tried to put the blame on the town, that is not necessarily accurate. We have made our efforts to get this information over and to get a response from the water, the Watertown Fire District. Thank you.
It's their attorney you're talking about, right?
That's correct.
The next speaker, please.
Frankie Popolowski, 35 Chestnut Avenue. First comment, why don't you figure out what we're doing with this bond? This is ridiculous. You guys have been this has been dragging on for years. You have to have some kind of a clue. And the budget. My second comment is Waterbury's water is horrible. I will not drink it. I won't even cook with it. I won't even give it to my cats. The only thing I do with it is I water the plants and the lawn. That's it. It's all I do. If we're going to be paying all this money out, the least they could do is give us decent water. It smells and it tastes like mold. Doesn't matter how much you clean, it still stinks to high heaven. Why don't we do something about that? You want us to pay out all this money to them? Give us good water. I got sick when I first moved here, and it was because of the water. And if you'd like some proof, I will give it to you. You put on here that the low residential annual gallons used is now going to be 5,000. It was 12. That's just your way of getting more money from us. You lower the gallons that you can use per year. So now we got to pay an extra $284 because of that, which to me typical residents uses a hell of a lot more than 10,000 gallons. I have my water bill here from the last time. I use 12,000 a year, and there's only me. So explain to me why you went from 12,000 gallons annually down to 5,000 gallons. A lot of money. Typical resident, now there you're saying 10,000 gallons. I don't buy it. High resident, 20,000. Don't buy that either. Small business, 50,000 gallons a year, and a large business manufacturing, 200,000 gallons a year. Wow, I really don't believe that one. Do you have any money in the town budget that's going to pay the increase for the municipalities?
We do not budget an exact amount for utilities. So yes, I
Here we go. Exact amount again, when you already know what we're going to have to pay, and you still can't give us a number. Same same story. When does this get old for you people? When do you start seeing what you're doing to the ratepayers and the taxpayers? No, you're not going to raise the taxes this year, but you will next year, and it'll be a hefty one. So everybody get ready. Exactly. After the election. You said that you base this new annual gallons usage on 12 to 24 historic usage. That's not true. You didn't. At least not according to my bill. I don't even know how I use this much when it's only me. You already pay for the water coming in, and then you got to pay for the same water when you flush it when it goes out. So you're paying double for the same amount of water. So let's see, what else do I have? So you don't have you don't have any monies put aside from the for the municipalities part of this bill. Are you ever going to tell us how much the town has to pay to the water and sewer department?
I'm not sure what you're asking, but
I'm asking
Wait a minute.
If the municipality has enough, if you if the town budget has enough money to pay the water and sewer usage for all the municipalities, and I'll go through the list again if you'd like, you're on town water and sewer here. You're on town water and sewer in all the schools. You're on town water and sewer for. Is there any money? Because you lied about the money being in there from the water and sewer, and it was never there. I went to a meeting a few years ago when all this started. And one of the the two people that were sitting by me didn't know that I was just a towns person. One guy came in, he goes, oh, my God, I thought we had 6,000 some odd dollars in the in the reserves to pay for this water and sewer lawsuit. The guy goes, no, we don't have nearly that much. None of the money, the extra money that we had to pay for the short pay on all the invoices, that money wasn't put into the water and sewer budget to pay for this mess. You didn't put really any monies aside. So this is why this bill is is so high now. To go from 5,000, from 12,000 gallons a year for the minimum down to five is robbery. You don't expect people to be mad. Well, we are. We're sick of it. Why wasn't this on the on the Town Times last Thursday? This meeting should have been on the front page of that paper. But everybody was worried about it going into the Waterbury paper. Well, I don't get the Waterbury paper. I get the Town Times. Nothing on there about this meeting tonight. Are you going to put the referendum meeting on there for August 27? Marian, I'm asking
We don't. We're not the editor of the paper. We can't tell them what to put on
Your job to do it. It's your job to do it. It's your job to do it.
Okay, please don't
We're tired of of
Please don't point at me.
Don't yell at us. Don't yell at us.
I would like to correct the record for something. I was not the town manager that was in charge when this started.
But you
I may not be. I'm not at fault, but I am responsible for navigating this. And I'm listening to your comments, and I'm appreciating them.
If you
Please don't point at me.
But you knew about this when you took the town manager's job, when you got elected
This is not under my purview to make decisions. This is not my decision.
It's the town council's decision. Okay. Maybe if you showed a little bit more empathy
Please talk to the council, not to Mr. Ramos.
Well, I'm directing it to him.
Well, you're speak to us, please.
Then please have a little bit more consideration for the towns, the the ratepayers and the taxpayers, because the taxpayers have to pay part of this too. But they don't want to believe that. But it's true. And we're actually paying twice because we have to pay the taxes and we have to pay our own rates. Like I said, paying for the same water going in that's going out. And then you have the nerve, I don't know who came up with this, 5,000 gallons a year. That's absurd. Nobody uses just 5,000 gallons a year. And if they do, I'd like to see it. But I'm one person with cats that won't even drink your water.
The next speaker, please.
Mark Sebastianelli, 7 Warwick Road, Watertown, Connecticut. I have a question. In the Waterbury Republican, they said that the Watertown Fire District was overcharging the town of Watertown for the water rates. Now, was that from 2018 to 2025?
I don't have the year, but I believe it's been longer than that.
Okay, my question is, the rates are going to go up from 328 per thousand gallons to the Watertown Fire District customers to 984 per thousand, according to the Waterbury Republican newspaper. So let's say it was 2018 to 2025, seven years. So when we start paying the new rates, it's going to take seven years from 2025 to 2020, 2032. Will our rates go from 984 to the new rate of 459 per thousand gallons?
I don't think that I I have that information to answer that. If you would leave your number, I would be happy to get that information, and I could post it on the website with an answer. But I can't accurately answer that for you. I don't know.
Okay. Now, the other question I have is, is there any way we can lower the bond reading from 34 million to, say, 30 million? Do you have any town properties? I don't know if you can do this. Any town properties you can sell and apply it to the bond? For example, Route 262 East and Route 262 West across the street from the Uncommon Grill. Two years ago, an Exxon Mobil station was supposed to open up there. Right now, it's overgrown with weeds. I mean, could we get like a Cumberland Farms in there or a Texas Roadhouse Restaurant and sell the property? I don't know if it's still up for sale, but there's no Exxon Mobil gas station.
We don't own the property. We can't sell it.
Well, what what happened to the property? I mean, nothing's going on. Did the guy default?
We don't know. We don't own it. We can certainly check and find out what we can for you.
No, I'm just curious. I'm just trying to save some money for the town and for the taxpayers then.
We we did consider looking at property that we could sell. That would be a short term answer to this issue to help offset the cost.
That's right.
We do not have real estate that would bring that value down that much. I do believe that this bond, when all said is done, is going to be closer to the 30 million or maybe even less.
Oh, okay.
But again, this, as I said before, it's a banding process where we take short term loans to to create a payoff to Waterbury, and then Watertown will actually have a bond at the exact amount. We will provide a full accounting to what's being bonded, and we will be held accountable to what is in the bond ordinance. So it's not like we could put a project up on 262 and and develop something and add this to the bond. That's not how it works.
No, I'm saying sell it.
No, no, I'm just making a comparison. But yes, I understood your point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, please.
Good evening. Cynthia Ton, 1362 Litchfield Road. I'm actually rather happy that I don't, I'm not a member of the water and sewer program here in Watertown, but I am a citizen, and I have empathy and compassion for my towns, town members, and citizens who do have to face this. I think it's atrocious. But before I get any further, I have a couple of questions. With this grant, this bond that you are going to obtain, who is going to monitor the payment of the money and report it out to the townspeople on a monthly basis so that we know that the money is being managed correctly?
Payments are handled by our finance department, and we have an auditor that monitors our books.
Will this audit of the grant be provided to the townspeople on a monthly basis? Because, frankly, we don't trust you.
I I don't believe.
Excuse me, ma'am?
I don't believe that that is normally how it works with
How does it work?
I believe the annual, it's an annual audit.
It's an annual audit. So that money could be spent in any way that anyone in this town chooses without any reporting to the people of this town?
No, that's not correct. That's never happened. It's never happened.
It's never happened? Oh, well, I I would bane, I I deign to disagree with you, but I'm not going to get into that discussion today right now. I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions. Can you imagine that the trust of the Republican government in the town of Watertown may have eroded? Anybody have an answer from you?
No, we're not going to discuss politics tonight.
I'm not asking about politics. I'm saying just the government. How about that? We'll say it this way, then. Has the trust in the government eroded?
From what? From yours, obviously, yes.
Anybody else, you think, trust you or not trust you?
These are your comments. I'm not
Yeah. Well, I think that it's it's a critical issue because as far as I'm concerned as a taxpayer, is that I would never trust this government with the management of a 34 million bond, for 34 million dollar bond, because of the way that this has been managed. I mean, I know that Mr. Ramos was not the town manager, but I'm sure some of you here were in the town council when the decision was made not to pay Waterbury new rates. I think it was back in 2017, 2018, when in fact, the same rates were applied to Middlebury, Nagatuck, Wilton, Prospect, the same new rates were provided to all these townships The same new rates were provided to all these townships and guess what they did? Oh, they paid the new rates. They didn't say, oh, we're too good for that. We shouldn't have to pay those new rates. We've been paying these old rates since 2019, 21. So we shouldn't have to pay these new rates. For God's sake, shame on you. Shame, shame, shame. And the reason I say shame is because you think you're so entitled that you're not the same as Prospect or Middlebury or Nagatuck or Wilton. I mean, we deserve better. We deserve respect and we deserve to be communicated with. So shame on you.
Next speaker, please. The other mic, if you would, please.
Oh, I am so sorry. Thank you. Oh, yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Barbara Zelkowsky. I live at 17 Mallory Road. I am here tonight, I'm, I wasn't planning on speaking, but someone made a comment and I need one clarification and two, and I'm gonna do this first. I wanna read what I wrote on Facebook because I'm not aware of anybody who, from the town council or anybody else, really responding. This is how I feel and I am a registered Republican and I'm proud to say that. And I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm really disappointed in the town council and our town manager. And this is just my opinion. This wasn't an accident. It was a reckless gamble with our money. It's like going to Vegas with everyone else's cash, losing it all, and then sending us the bill. Both town managers acted far outside their authority and the town council sat back and allowed it. Mr. Ramos, I like you. I have, I have respect for you. But when you came into office, you could have changed what the previous town manager did. We should, uh, we should sue both town managers and town council. And if they're bonded, those bonds should be tapped to repay the loss because the people who caused this mess should pay for it and not the ratepayers. Now, Mr. Ramos, and I'm not sure who else in this, in this room knows, I am the treasurer for the Fire District. And I see the bills every month. And I am not talking for the Fire District. But can you clarify to me, please, what the Fire District overcharged anybody in WSA? Because you made a comment, this gentleman who spoke a couple of minutes ago, had made a comment about the Fire District overcharging people. We have been playing catch-up on the, on the advice of the attorney that represents the Fire District, that we should start raising our rates. I have, I am pulling up my bill right now. I am a single person, one person. I don't water my lawn. I water my garden every other day for five minutes so that I can have fresh produce instead of going to the grocery store and having to battle rotten vegetables at a high price. My minimum charge, which is passed on to everybody in the Fire District, is 3787. And that's for water. Our monthly sewer minimum charge is 3152. How much more do we have to take on? Not just in the Fire District, who only uses sewer, by the way, because we have our own water. And I'm proud to say that. But how much more do we have to take? And our taxes, when I moved here 21 years ago, my mortgage rate is 3%. And I took out, I bought a house for 330,000 with six people. I put down 105,003%. My mortgage with escrow and insurance was $1,200. I am now paying 1660 and anticipating paying over $1,700. I'm sorry to say this, but Watertown is becoming a wannabe Greenwich and not all of us can afford it. That's all I have to say.
I want to finish my question to know about what the Fire District is overcharging WSA.
The town manager, for clarification, never had an opportunity to reverse any actions by the council, even if he wanted to. That's, that's not an authority that he has or an option.
So who has the authority? If Mr. Ramos is our town manager, he should be representing the people. And it should be going through you. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but this is frustrating. I have three jobs. Ma'am, I have three jobs. Single mother who put her children through college. They have no college debt. I'll be damned if I'm gonna have debt because of the town of Watertown. And I disagree. The town manager, it has a job to do. And if you on this council are controlling him and preventing him from doing it, then shame on all of you. And you all should be replaced.
We appreciate your comments, but please don't yell at us.
I am very frustrated and I apologize. I'm also Italian, Ms. Rosa. And I speak very loudly and can be misconstrued as yelling.
Okay, I'm Italian too.
And you understand.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, may I respond to the question? I don't believe I said that the water and, uh, the Fire District overcharged the town. The discussion point was of a section of town in which the Fire District charged an upgraded amount and the town never took that amount and passed it along to the-
So you're talking about Platt Road. You're talking about-
That area, that's correct.
But that is controlled by WSA and not the Fire District.
That's the point I'm trying to make. So if you could let me answer-
Sure, go ahead, answer.
That was the point I was trying to get to. It wasn't saying that, I never, I never even came into my mind that WFD is overcharging the WSA. That's not in my mindset. It's nothing I've wrote. It's nothing I've even discussed. The only piece was that one area that WFD charged appropriately and it was the WSA that did not pass that price law.
That is correct, but that's not how it sounded when I sat in the back.
That's because there's an emotional piece that everybody's getting into and we're missing the facts. And I'm more than willing to sit down with anybody in this room and talk through the facts.
I think you need to talk to the general public about the facts and not just on an individual basis.
I've been putting out a frequently asked questions bulletin. We openly communicate. We're trying to get the information out there.
I respectfully disagree, but thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I'm six. I don't know how much I'll be able to speak. I didn't realize I was coming to a barbecue. But this is not all your fault. This is a town that's been asleep for a long time. This started in 2016. And if people would attend meetings, they would see what's going on. But no one attends these meetings. No one goes to the WSA meetings. No one goes to the Fire District meetings. They're all in the meeting minutes. When it started with a car wash on Straych Turnpike to today. There's court documents where Mr. Pelosi uh, first kind of authored his story and said to the interim manager at the time, "We advise you to start putting some money aside. You could lose this." No one read those documents. No one read anything, not even you. Okay, so all of us are to blame a little bit. It's not one-sided or one person. It's kind of the town has screwed up. And I think we all have to work together as residents to do the best we can to fix it and move forward and make changes where changes are needed. But we need more people to become more active in more meetings and watch over. Not, there's not one ball of, one eye in the sky that's gonna take care of that for you. Everybody has to take a part. Everybody has to do something. Okay, I take my portion of responsibility. And I look forward to paying this debt and learning a valuable lesson. And I'm sorry that you're in this predicament, you, all of you. Because there were red flags along the way where somebody could have said, hey, something bad is happening. Um, but April 13th, 2020, Mr. Pelosi wrote a document to the interim manager before you came on board and he said, heads up, I'll give you two pieces of information. This may not go the way you think it's gonna go, so prepare. And no one prepared. That's all.
Could you state your name? I'm sorry.
Brenda Tate.
Brenda Tate.
24 Nolton Street, Watertown. Please don't throw stones at my house.
Next speaker, please. I have an online, a comment, only one comment came in online that I will read. From Nancy Drum. "I find the water sewer debacle very confusing." And she asked for clarification, uh, so she can make an informed decision when she votes. She wanted a breakdown of the water and sewer customers' billed amount versus, uh, interest owed. Fire District customers billed amount and interest owed. She said customers deserve to know what it is they're paying for and the breakdown of that $34 million bill the town of Watertown is giving to users who didn't opt-in for 18% interest fees. She attached a chart for customer charges versus interests and, and other fees. So that'll be attached to the record. Okay, um, I think at this point, we'll move on to the second ordinance, which is an ordinance appropriating $10 million for various road improvements. And our director will give us information.
Good evening. Jerry McCall, heat director of Public Works for Watertown. I'd like to thank everybody here today that was able to discuss the conditions of our roads. We do discuss this daily in the Public Works, each and every mile that we have. And we also discuss it monthly with the Public Works Department. Although I thought I could fix the road for five years. I've been here two and a half years. Um, it's not a real estate project. It's gonna take us anywhere from 10 to 25 years to fix our roads based on the amount of funding that we have. I do get mad when folks tell me, you know, when you drive to Watertown. And I really don't like that. I wanna fix our reconstruction. We have 140 miles of road. Uh, if you stretch it out, here to Boston, or here to Trenton, New Jersey, or here to Syracuse, the Springs. So it's a lot of miles of road that we have across ours now. This is our road surface rating. It's up in the orange. In 2022, it was 61. It's the same thing as school grade, zero to 100. Uh, so this is basically an F. It's the condition of our road. Uh, in '23, we got it up to a 63. If we didn't do any repairs, it would have been a 58. And in 2024, we currently, right now, it's at 64. Uh, this request is for $10 million of bonding. Uh, each year, we lose life to our opponent. We estimate we drive three RSR points and about a million and a half dollars to value to 140 miles of road that we have across the country. State's average is 72. Uh, that's our initial goal, to at least get to the end, which would be a C. Still not a good grade. Uh, this was studied by BETA. It's an engineering firm. They did it in August of 2022. The overall need at that time was 45 million dollars. The repair of roads and making them all green for a good status. I gotta go off the ninja air, so I have to go through a little bit, a few charts. It's gonna be the same chart with the deterioration curve. You can see on the left, I have highlighted RSR 61, 64. We currently have 64. And due to the right across to the right-hand side, hopefully accept this place. So that's where we're at. And in fact, more than half of our roads are a lot lower than at the end of optimum service life and of effective service life. Uh, so we wanna fix the roads, but it does come at a cost. Another way to look at this graph, this is type of treatment setting. Crack seal, chipstone, mill-made, complacent, full-depth reconstruction. The only thing that we are focused on is crack sealing and chipstone. It's the most effective treatment. It's a big program for Middlebury and Southbury and try to find a pothole in those towns. They've been doing this treatment for the past few decades. Our pothole team has been out there since March with no end in sight. We're on clump number six of picks and potholes. Uh, many towns spend a few weeks, a few months, and then they wrap it up. With us focused on potholes, it's hard for us to know sightlines, vacuum of catch basins, paint crosswalks, stop bars, doing drainage, doing catch, catch basin repairs. We do do it, but we can't stay ahead of it with an entire team that's focused on potholes and failed roads. Another way, you know, I promise you, this is the last time I, I show you this chart. Uh, but once again, uh, for every dollar that we spend at the top of the RSR road surface rating, it saves us about six to 10 times the amount of money due to reconstruction. Uh, but one, this is one part of my goal, because I can't fix just the worst roads because the, the middle of the road grows, it's keep on collapsing. It'll keep on costing six to 10 times as much. So I gotta fix the worst roads and the better ones. And I gotta squeeze the middle so I don't have everything collapsing to the bottom. You can see the saw through that at the top. Uh, that's chipstone. Keep an eye on road to go to the condition. This is where you'll see a part of the problem. Uh, so for the previous nine years, we did 22.4 miles of road, 2.5 miles. In the past two years, uh, thanks to your support and town council, town manager, uh, we did 35 miles of road. Uh, this year, we're gonna be right around 50 miles of road. We should have done about seven to 10 miles of road each year to keep up with our 140 miles. But right now, we have to play catch-up and do 10, 20, 30 miles of road to keep them and, and get them in a better condition. The concern with not receiving the bond this year is we would look like 2017. We didn't do it. So next year, if we don't receive a bonding, there won't, there will not be a gating program. The other items on here, the RSR is up at the top. It's, it's out to two digits, so 64.31. And the unfinanced requirement, the need, is 40.4 million dollars for the pound. Uh, this is a map. Uh, this was produced by BETA. I have the map on the wall right here. I also have it outside in the back lobby. So you can look at the rating of your road to see what the condition is. Uh, and it's just like a traffic light scale. So if it's green or blue, you're good. Yellow, not so good. Red is bad. Uh, white areas of oak fill, you can look at the wall map or on this one, they're fit. And also, we talk about our new subdivision, but our new subdivision's over the 80s, the 90s. But our new subdivision's over the eighties, the nineties, thousand. For all, they should have been repaid a decade ago. And we've limited to no funding for them. So I'm gonna take these colors and bring you into another graph. So just on major rehab, we would need twenty-four point four million dollars. So that's, that's our worst roads, thirty-five miles. But I also like to look right behind us for forty-three miles that are coming up into major rehab. So between the top two, thirty-seven million dollars. And the overall program, bottom right-hand corner, is forty point four million. And I say a hundred forty miles of road, but we have a hundred forty-one point ninety-seven miles of road. And you can see the RSR, that's listed there, sixty-four point three one. Hey, everybody, I know it's small, but this is our road program for the next three years, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, if this bonding goes through. And in fact, the roads that are listed for twenty twenty-five, we're only gonna get about half to two-thirds of those completed because we're out of money in the bonding that we did receive. So this is our goal. This is the original goal, it was six million dollars. That's what I said all last year for that. But we lost a million and a half to that doubt. So we're at seven and a half. The Public Works Department is asking, could you use more than that? And I said, yes, I think it's forty point four million dollars. That's not realistic, you know, for them. So, you know, with this study, and you think about forty million. So we're gonna have ten million of halves and thirty million of half-nuts. It's tough to say when we pave a road in the surrounding areas, one, same tree. And I wanna provide. And also the six million, the seven and a half million we've lost in a year. But with the pothole crew, and out there for six months, they're gonna be doing potholes until the snow falls. We really need ten million dollars for this program. From what I understand, they will be banned it. So if I spend four billion the first year, it's only gonna be four million dollars worth of bonding. Of course, it's not ten million dollars, that's what we, uh, borrow. Some of the coordination in the unknowns is we do have seventy miles of four mortar pipe across the town. And we roughly have about seven to ten miles of that, this list of roads. So I need to get closed circuit television to do an inspection of all these pipes, because we can't see them. They're underground. But it's kinda scary, because anytime you look in the, in the system, you see something that failed. And it just costs money. I don't think that. We have to evaluate, we have fifty-five hundred catch faces in some towns. There's probably about a thousand with this list. We have to evaluate each and every one to either repair it, replace it, or if it's in condition, we're good. The other part is utility coordination of gas, water, sewer, electric, and cable. There's some of the toughest folks to work with. We gave them this list. So if they, if they're gonna do gas work on the road, I'll just push it out to the next year. Because I don't wanna pave a road and then dig it back up. So the list is, is a little bit fluid. And the other part is we have to develop the contracts to go off the bidding. And we also, we have a storm like we did fifty-one weeks ago on eighteen August in twenty twenty-four, a hurricane. Other issues can show up in other parts of the town that we have to repair. And there's also a lot of, of our subdivisions not have drainage. And residents are requesting drainage. Of course, I don't want to provide it. But the cost to repair that road is gonna cost two to three times as much. I do have to thank my team, the Golden Engineering in Iowa, who support me. Especially the bio-grain breed. He didn't give up on paper, that's on the left-hand side. This paper's twenty-five years old. They don't make parks for it anymore. But we had to get a manufactured park out of the Midwest to get this paper up and running. And that's why you see us doing what we call shimming skin across the town. It is a big park that helped mediate and result in the number of potholes and alligator crack in roads that we have. First, we fill the potholes, and then the road is alligator. You know, broken into small pieces, we shimmed and skinned whole. And I'd also like to thank my admin staff for taking all the calls. There's probably three to six a, a day, paid my road. Do want to, you wanna take care of, um, people that love your calls. The other part of this is drainage. Which, it's a big part. This is the team from last year, we fixed the Norfield Road. And we recently got off of Guernsey Town Road, we replaced five hundred feet of toller pipe. That was on the side of the road. So it's a lot of hard work for the team to do, but we're ready, especially in Iowa's engineering to repair our pavement infrastructure. The one thing I didn't talk about is the liability of our road system. We do get planes for going higher, the bent rims. Last one was on American Lane. It was about four thousand dollars, because it's a very expensive wrench to the vehicle. But if you go down American right now, we'll see how it's improved by the shimming skin team. But also, this is the traveling public, motorcycles, bicycles. You know, all we need is one plane, if somebody gets serious with her, one of our potholes that have been out nonstop for six months. And it'll be four to the ten million dollars. Like to thank you for listening, I appreciate this a lot, I love the big infrastructure. And we're excited to support the residents and town council. Thank you.
Do we have comments from the public?
Franklin Pelosi, two thirty-five Main Street, Watertown. I would like to compliment Jerry and all of the Public Works. Often, individuals that I run into will make a comment to me about how good the Public Works Department has been working around town the last couple of years. And I tell them to pass that on to Public Works and the town council. So tonight, I'm here, I guess, to speak for all that have mentioned to me the complimentary aspects of what's going on with Public Works. And I thank the council for supporting Public Works, I thank the town manager for supporting Public Works. And I thank Jerry, because he's done a great job, and he's been a great credit to Watertown. Thank you.
Mike Fusco, nine seventeen Hamilton Avenue, Watertown.
Also, compliment you on your crew. I've seen those guys, I know a lot of them, they do a really good job. I think we have one of the best highway departments in the state, to be honest with you. And as far as those people that are making claims. I live on Hamilton Avenue, speed limit's thirty. Most people go by my driveway when I'm getting my mail, like fifty or fifty-five, so. That guy who ruined a beautiful rims was probably going twenty-five miles over the speed limit. It wasn't the road's fault, it was his fault. That's all I got.
Tom Donston, three twenty Park Road. Both of these roads need to be rehabbed from, from ground up. The water system, everything, it's gotta go, it's I bet you most of our water pipes are seventy, eighty years old. I guarantee that. Forty years ago, someone sold this town a whole bunch of corrugated pipe. Look at Ekalik Road, look what happened to it. Now we're putting plastic in the ground. Nothing stops water. The best pipe to put in the ground is round circle concrete pipe. That is the best pipe to put in the ground. I've done this business for forty years. I know. I see what the roads do. Just shimmin' the roads. You're wasting asphalt at ninety-three dollars a ton. Do a road. Fix some potholes, do a road. Shimmin', you know, it looks fine and dandy, people see progress, it looks like progress. Not progress, it's a temporary patch, like everything else. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Cynthia Ton, thirteen sixty-two Litchfield Road. Mr. Lukowski, great presentation. Thank you so much. I've definitely noticed a difference. I'll never forget back in twenty fourteen, thirteen, when I called the Public Works and said, you know, this one particular road was not doing well and needed to be repaved. They said, well, maybe in eighty years. Literal comment from the director of Public Works. Eighty years before Baldwin Road would be taken care of in any way. So thank you very much. But I just have to make a couple of comments about what I read. And number one, it seems a little loosey-goosey with how you're going to use your money. I'm not questioning your integrity in any manner. You seem to know what you're doing. But based upon what we've been experiencing recently here in town, when I see that there's this long list of, of things that the money can be spent on, I start getting nervous. You know, is there any way we can tighten that up a little bit to show where the money's really going to go? Because it's a bit of a problem in terms of trust right now. Is that something that we can do?
It's on the, it's on the paving list for the three-year program.
Okay.
All, each and every road that we're gonna work on.
Okay, so regardless of how that money is spent, those roads will get done?
It depends on the utility companies, if they have a construction project that's coming in.
Right.
It depends if we have another eighteen August storm that set us back of a few months. So there, there is a lot of variables.
Right, I understand that. But overall, your, your integrity, I don't question it at all. So thank you. And I'd have one last thing to say. It's such a shame that we have to spend thirty million dollars on water and sewer when that could have been applied to our infrastructure. Thank you.
Anyone else?
It's not an oh, it's all good. Barbara Zalkowski, seventeen Mallory Road. I wanted to say I'm in full support of this ten million dollar bond. And to the gentlemen of Public Works, kudos. You're doing a fantastic job. I have to agree with the previous speaker, though, and I wanna read what I wrote on Facebook, because I think it's important for everyone to hear regarding the wording of the bond. This language leaves far too much room for discretionary spending without precise accountability. While milling, paving, and other improvements sound straightforward, the proposal's broad wording, other improvements, other expenses related to the project, opens the door to costs far beyond roadwork. A ten million dollar appropriation requires a detailed itemized plan before approval, not just a blank check. And I just wanna stop there and thank you for everything that you explained tonight to the public. Taxpayers deserve to know exactly which roads are being milled and paved, the projected cost for each, and how much is allocated to non-paving expenses like consultants, legal fees, police, and temporary interests. The clause granting the town manager and designees the authority to reduce or modify the scope without further approval is particularly troubling. This effectively removes public oversight once the funds are approved. The trust has already been broken with the Republican Party in town. The only responsible path forward is to demand a full, transparent breakdown of all costs, a firm project list, and safeguards preventing reallocation without public consent. Ten million dollars should fix roads, not fund an open-ended wish list. That's all.
Just, just for your information.
Yes.
The ordinance language is something that is guided by our guidance from the bonding firm.
So you, so you're telling
They want the bond language to be written.
This is, this is coming from somewhere else and not from the town council or anybody else? Is that what you're telling me?
No, we don't write the ordinances. The ordinances are done by a bonding council.
And this is their wording? Then, then I would suggest the town council make changes to the wording, so that you can earn, including the town manager, can earn our trust back.
Anyone else?
Catherine Camer, thirty-one Cottage Place. I have a few questions, but I wonder, can I ask Mr. Lukowski, or do I go through you?
Well, ask the questions, and let's see what they are.
So, first question I have is, on the presentation, talking about the three years, there were four years up there, there was still twenty twenty-five. So I don't know if, I, I don't know what twenty twenty-five is, is up there as part of what we're bonding, or that's what's going on now and it's gonna be finished. I, I just would like clarification on that, please.
Sure.
It's the current year plus three years, so it's twenty twenty-five plus twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. The bonding is focused for a portion of twenty-five to finish. And also the, the three years of twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
Okay, I did see Guernsey Town Road was on that in twenty twenty-five, and then you, you said you just got off Guernsey Town Road. So is Guernsey Town Road completed? Or will there any of this eleven million dollars go towards Guernsey Town Road?
Guernsey Town Road, we do in sections, so it's basically the northern section of Guernsey Town Road that we're gonna work on next.
Okay, so there's still work going on there.
I think Guernsey Town was like five or six sections of, of the road. Going on for about ten years.
Okay. And then I have a question. I, I'm very happy to see that my road is finally on the, the list for twenty twenty-seven. Back in twenty twenty-five, a pipe broke in the road leading to my house. It was December seventeenth, my, my basement was flooding continuously. It was actually the road crew out to plow that realized that I had a leak. And so right after New Year's, I had my, the road dug up, my yard dug up, all pipes put in. At the time, they told me, okay, this is really bad. My road, I'm in Oakville, one of the oldest neighborhoods, needs all-new pipes. The same thing happened to, it had happened to a house before mine, a few years before mine, that I didn't actually know until mine happened. And then it happened to three more after mine. And we were all replacing those pipes. So my question at this point is, is we were told then, and that was in twenty twenty-five, or I was told, that we were gonna get, we were, we were gonna need all-new piping. And I'm not on a really long, I'm, I'm on a dead end, it's not terribly long. But my question is, when, when, when you're gonna be paving our road, so we've got pipes underneath that paving that need to be replaced, there's, that's what's gonna happen, the pipes will never be done?
That's the first thing that has to be done, is we have to put a camera in all these roads that we're gonna pave. I call that CCTV. So we have to look inside, under the road, in those pipes that we can't see other than when something fails.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, was that a, a stormwater pipe, or was that a water line?
Water line.
Okay. So there will not be a camera in, in the water lines, it's gonna be in the stormwater lines?
Well, I won't need anything, because I spent a lot of money, you know, fixing that. But it's a matter of even what's in the main piping and everything, that's what they were telling me.
Anyone else? Do the questions just pertain to the Public Works? Sure. Or can I ask you another question? Public Works. Well, I've already talked to Jerry, he already knows the problem, it's back again. And my street, oh, Frankie Popolowski, Chestnut Avenue. My street wasn't on the list, so. But it has to be fixed, so what happens in that case?
I still have to look at it during a rain event, I wanna see what you, what you're talking about. I can't see it during dry weather conditions. And unfortunately, that's where we do have the ten million of halves and thirty million of half-nuts. Because everybody asks me, what about my road? And I say forty million dollars.
But the same problem is the water is ponding, winter's coming, it's all ice. If a car comes whipping around that corner, which they do all the time, it'll hit townhouse on the end, and it'll damage mine. Water is now, is still coming down the driveway, and it's going Water is still coming down the driveway and it's going down the gully. A lot more of it, because it's coming from both sides.
Yep.
So, okay. Just a food for thought. Is the town council and town manager bonded?
That's something we would look into and advise you about. Town manager is definitely bonded, I know.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. There'll be a two-minute recess, and then we are going to open our special meeting.
Thank you. I hereby call the special meeting of August twelfth, twenty twenty-five to order.
We're standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Roll call, please.
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Candice Mears.
Here.
Robert De Sina.
Here.
Anthony Debona.
Here.
Marina Noid.
Here.
Robert Retalik.
Here.
Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Jonathan Ramsey. And Rachel Ryan.
I'm here.
Okay. Item four.
All right. I make a motion that the Watertown Town Council approve the resolution adopting the bond ordinance entitled in ordinance appropriating thirty-four million for the settlement of litigation against against the town and the city of Waterbury versus the town of Watertown, and for related costs, and authorizing the issue of bonds or notes, and temporary notes, in the same amount to finance the appropriation.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments from-
Just a clarifying question. The the way this reads is settlement of litigation, but there is still a pending appeal to the Connecticut Supreme Court. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
This is to pay the, to pay the bond, to get bonds to pay the city. This, that, this isn't a full settlement with the city. We've never come to an agreement with the city as to settling this appeal to the Connecticut Supreme Court. Is that correct?
That's one hundred percent correct.
Thank you.
For the sake of clarification, I believe it should read, proposed bond ordinance titled, not entitled. It reads entitled. It should be reading titled. Where are you? Oh, you're on the next one, her.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
You have questions?
Through the chair, Mark, I'm gonna direct this to you. I think you're probably most knowledgeable on it. I know that although you and I were not in our current rules back when this started being underpaid, I would assume this was done with the guidance of legal counsel, this decision. Since the town has suffered substantial financial losses as a result of that decision, has there been any any attempt to look into pursuing a legal malpractice claim?
I'll respond to that since the council would have to act on it. We had three different law firms advising us, not one, not just one attorney. So no, there has not been any action of that nature.
Another question? Okay. Anyone else?
I'd like to make a statement. I thought about making it earlier and decided not to. I'm a ratepayer, too. I live on Social Security. I'm as upset as everyone else. And I'm not only as upset about the loss of the judgment, but I'm upset about what it's doing to our town and to the trust that people have in our government. When whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, you're working like hell to do a good job. And you give your time and your effort, and you stay away from your family, and you sit here when you're sick because you care. So you never make a decision that you're gonna hurt yourself and your family and your friends and your relatives and your neighbors. The decisions that were made by the various councils were under the governments and guidance of three different law firms. And we weren't advised on a monthly basis. There were big interims in between. And we were basing our guidance on what was written in Connecticut law to benefit us. But a Waterbury judge didn't see it that way. He saw it to the benefit of Waterbury. So I'm with you. I'm concerned. I'm not looking forward to how I'm gonna pay that bill either. But I don't have a choice, and I don't think we do. We need to pay it off, and we need to get back on our feet and take care of our obligation. And then we can look at the best way to move forward and the cheapest way we can move forward for our town. And believe me, we do keep that in mind. We do try. We spend hours trying to figure it out. Whether you believe me or not, I've given a lot of years, and I've always been honest, whether I agreed with you or whether I didn't. And I'm telling you now, this was never done without what we thought was best for the ratepayers. For seven years, Waterbury didn't get to charge residents that high, high rate. And they ignored every effort we made to try and come to some kind of an agreement as we went along. Over and over, every single week and month, the attorneys were calling and trying to set up meetings, and they refused to meet with us. They didn't want to hear it. And the court went along with them, and it ended because Mary Ann Rosa happens to believe that it was a Waterbury judge. But whatever the outcome is, we abide by the law. And we need to pay, we need to pay our obligations. So I'm hoping that enough people in town support the ordinance and pass the bonding, so we can do what we have to do to get back on our feet. And regardless of what political party sits here after us, they're gonna have the same issues and the same problems to get us back where we belong. So we've gotta work together to get to that spot. And that means paying the bond or issuing the bonds. Okay. We masked by the attorney to do a roll call vote. So all those in favor of the motion and the ordinance appropriating the money, please raise your hand.
Did you call the names?
It's unanimous.
And is Rachel, Rachel Ryan?
Rachel, how are you voting?
Yes, in favor.
Thank you. It's affirmative.
All right. I make a motion to approve the resolution regarding the adoption of the proposed bond ordinance titled in ordinance appropriating ten million dollars for various road improvements and related work, and authorizing the issue of bonds or notes, and temporary notes, in the same amount to finance the appropriation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
Yes.
Once again, through the chair, it should read titled, not entitled.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Yes. Through the chair, I am looking at the last sentence of part one of this ordinance. I understand the language was provided by the bonding attorney. That one sentence seems vague to me. This is a twenty-year bond. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. There's a lot of discretion given to the town manager. And unless you never plan to retire, I'm assuming at some point during the course of this bond, that's gonna be a different town manager. I think the language of that final sentence could be tightened up with the assistance of the bonding attorneys.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the bond, please say, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
I'm sorry. Roll call. We need to raise our hands again.
We're gonna raise hands.
Raise hands.
Motion passes unanimously.
I make a motion that the ordinance is considered under items four and five on today's agenda to be submitted to the electors for approval or disapproval at referendum to be held on Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and shall be published in full within ten days in a newspaper having circulation within the town. The town clerk shall publish notice of the referendum. The ballot headings for the ordinance is submitted under said items shall read as follows. Shall the town of Watertown appropriate thirty-four million for the settlement of litigation against the town in the case of City of Waterbury versus the town of Watertown, and for related costs, and authorize the issue of bonds or notes, and temporary notes, in the same amount to finance the appropriation. Together. Item two, shall the town of Watertown appropriate ten million dollars for various road improvements and related work, and the authorization authorizing the issue of bonds or notes, and temporary notes, in the same amount to finance the appropriation. Electors approving the ordinance shall vote yes, and those opposed shall vote no. Poll shall be open between the hours of six AM and eight PM.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions are coming? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Roll call, sorry.
Hands up.
Hands up. Motion passes unanimously.
I move that the following resolution be approved. Resolved that the office of the town clerk is directed to prepare and distribute concise explanatory text regarding the questions for the approval and disapproval of the ordinances considered under items four and five at tonight's meeting to be submitted to the electors at September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five referendum vote. And the town manager is authorized in such official's discretion to prepare and distribute additional explanatory materials regarding said questions, such text, and explanatory material to be subject to the approval of the town attorney and to be prepared and distributed in ordinance with section nine dash three sixty-nine B of the General Statute of Connecticut, revision of nineteen fifty-eight as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Ms. Ryan?
My hand, yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Sit right. Make a motion to adjourn. A second?
Second.
Motion and a second.